So we'll get, uh, we'll get started. All right, flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So do we have any addition, is there any additions to the agenda?
No.
Nope. And Declaration of Ex parte contacts, conflict of interest, bias, et cetera? Nope. All right, public comment time. I think I gotta read something, correct? The council will now receive public comment. We value the time and initiative members of the public take to share their thoughts with the council. The council's role during public comment is not to immediately respond, but to listen. If there's follow-up necessary, we will directly, direct city staff to do so. Remember that we all model the way of our community, and we ask that everyone share their thoughts respectfully. Those who have completed a request for recognition form will be called one at a time to step forward and state their name and address. We're not doing the address anymore, are we? Just, just state your name and you live in Stateon. Please note that speakers will have three minutes to express their thoughts. Okay. Mr. Hayes. Mr. Mayor hit the, the button.
First, a question. When it comes to street signage, is that city shops along with maybe the police? Leonard Hayes, Stateon, sorry, Jordan. Welcome. Now, can my question get answered? Who's in charge if there's a stop sign of any kind, anything like that busted, broken, or badly weathered?
Public works.
Public works, okay. So for the past, I'm gonna say two years at least, I've been patient. Nobody's doing anything about it, so, okay, and it's very simple. At least two places that I'm aware of, and that would be, uh, Bymart, uh, the one probably closest towards the school, okay, coming out of there, everybody knows there's a big giant arborvitahedge there. Okay, on both sides of that sidewalk, there's supposed to be, currently there's only one, and you can't tell anything but, uh, bicycle stop signs. Okay, there's also some down on, uh, West Town Drive as well. Uh, currently, the ones on West Town Drive, that you can't even see the stop sign part in there. I mean, a simple sticker would go on it. The bicycle sign is there, but the stop sign is not there. And then over, uh, near Bymart, uh, there's only one sign now. The other one was knocked down. Apparently, they took it away and did not replace it. And again, the signage is not really specifying stop. The reason this is kind of important to me, I, my wife and I got hit by a ten-speed coming flying down that sidewalk and hit the right side, you know, of our car. We lived in West Town. We just kinda zipped home because we didn't wanna block any traffic. We called the police immediately, and the police said, oh, the guy's already talking to the cop, and the cop let him know that he ran the bicycle stop sign. Okay, well, the stop signs currently now are not that readable, so kinda wanna maybe keep that, or think that might be something to fix. Okay, and it seems like a simple fix to me, a simple sticker, you know, or something to put on it. I don't think it has to be specially painted or anything. And then we have one, like I said, someone did hit it, and I saw it laying there for about a month or two, and then someone finally came and picked it up and didn't replace it. Okay? Thank you.
No other public comment? That was it? All right, next consent agenda, so we have the August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four City Council joint session minutes and August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four City Council regular session minutes.
Council President Sims, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented. This is Council Patty, by the way.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, so it's approved, correct? Oh, we gotta vote, sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See, I told you I'd mess up some stuff.
You're doing great.
All right, next we have the presentations. Wow, Jana's got summer reading update, and there she is.
So I'm here tonight to talk to you about summer reading and kinda give you guys a recap of the summer. So, um, we had the biggest summer reading the library's ever had this summer. Um, we had eleven hundred and six people of all ages participate in our program that's, uh, designed and developed by our library team. Um, let's see if it's gonna let me click it. There we go. It's exciting to capture some of those small moments, too, where, um, where you're seeing people connect with different people, right, and new ideas, and have, see them interacting together. So we had four hundred people show up and participate in our kickoff party. This is a summer of storytime and greenstem activities, learning about worms and soil and water and pollinators, crafts, and, uh, visit from the Oregon Coast Aquarium. We had performances by Red Yarn and Natalia, Paradise of Samoa, the West African Cultural Arts Institute, and Jeff Evans, a magician. We had a fantastic summer, and none of it would've been possible without our amazing library crew and our incredible volunteers. With that, I'd happy to answer any questions for you.
How many people did you say was, wasn't involved?
Eleven hundred and six. So we were really, really excited about cracking a thousand, and then we kept going, so, um, it was pretty exciting.
Yeah, that's fantastic. That's really, really good. I mean, I, we lived at the library when our kids were young.
Well, thank you.
Councilor Sims?
Councilor Julia?
Is this how this works? Uh, so how, uh, just curious, kind of how, how is that, so those eleven hundred, um, how, like, what does that include, kind of, that number?
That's everybody who's participating in the program, so when they come in and they're, whether they're reading the thirty-day challenge, or they're earning, they're doing the, like, so we did a menu of options, so they can read for thirty days and track it on their bag and try to do that, or they can read and count, some people really wanna count their time, right, so they're tracking their time, or they wanna do both. So it's those, it captures the whole, so, and then, um, we did the same program with those options for all ages, instead of breaking down by age groups, like, the menu is available with those options for all ages, so families can participate together, right? And adjust accordingly.
Awesome. Fantastic.
Cool.
Well, thanks, Jana. That was, that was great.
No problem.
And now we have Safety Town Update.
I'm getting that one ready, too.
Thank you. So, um, since I've come to Stateon, this has been one of my projects I really wanted to, uh, push forward, and as you've heard from the library and all their fantastic programs, um, the police department partnering with the library was such a perfect fit for this. So, super excited to have our first annual Safety Town here in Stateon. Um, as we found with other safety towns, same was true with Stateons, is that the benefit was not just for the five and six-year-old campers who came for five days, spent all those mornings with us, learning safety, um, but it was also about the middle school and high schoolers who had an opportunity to mentor the littles, and, um, we use it as an opportunity for life skills. So in order for them to be part of Safety Town, they had to go through a job interview, which can be, you know, a little nerve-wracking, but, um, important life skills for these kids. Um, and they all did fantastic. They all brought, you know, different skills and characters and, uh, you know, personalities to our camp. And then it was largely, too, about partnering, uh, with other professionals in our community. So, um, whether it was the volunteers that already work at the library, the police department, or within the city, but professionals, um, taught the safety lessons and engaged with the youth. So, um, a huge networking opportunity, huge partnership opportunity, and the kids had fun, they learned a lot, uh, we've had very positive feedback from the community about wanting to see it continue. Uh, I know Counselor Sims was able to enjoy the graduation, which was really meaningful. The kids got their little safety license and got to perform for their parents and special guests, and I just think it's a great opportunity for these little campers, um, to learn these things, but to engage with police officers and firefighters and lifeguards and people from the hospital and learn that they're helpers, um, and have that sort of mindset as well. And then, um, Public Works was fantastic and actually went out and lined our parking lot, so we had a little street system for our go-karts. And then I'll say our professionals, I mean, you see those happy, smiling police officers up there and the library staff and our city hall staff. Um, our records person got to come out and do helmet fittings, and she ended up giving Jana a big ol' hug at graduation. She was like, that was so good for my soul, just interacting with, um, these kids that are happy and smiling and having fun. So I, I, there was so much benefit to it, it's hard to measure, but, um, we're so thankful we could bring it to Stateon, and I'm so thankful to, to partner with the library, who's, um, just brings great, wonderful things to our community, and Jana's got the job of doing all the thank-yous.
We wanna shout out Melanie, too. I think, uh, the, the library team and the police team were so lucky to collaborate together, but, uh, we couldn't have done Safety Team Town without Melanie also. Um, we had the, the best presenters, and we're so grateful for them. So Chief Ally and Laura was here from the fire department, Lauren from Marion County Dog Services, um, Jessica came as an electrical utility volunteer, Shawna Godfrey from Metcom, Kristen Caitlin from Mid-Columbia Bus. Um, Norm Johnson answered a random cold call a week before camp, 'cause I really needed bicycle camp, bicycle safety, and he's from Salem Bicycle Club, and came out and saved our, saved our bacon, right, and totally did a, you know, one, an amazing job doing bicycle safety. Um, Emily and Michaela from The Pool, Michelle Anderson and Katia Garbe from Salem Hospital and Salem Health Hospitals and Clinics, Jamie from the American Red Cross, and Kim and Josie from Santi M Hospital, all came out and presented sessions to kids and did a fantastic job. And then we had amazing sponsors for Safety Town. So Thomas and Ford paid for all of the, our entire fleet of pedal cars, so they are all, um, we, we, um, made them all Fords, and they all have logos for Thomas and Ford. Um, the State and Public Library Foundation paid for all of the supplies and the extra things that make camp possible. Covered Bridge Cafe, um, sponsored a house for Safety Town, so you can see in one of the pictures Jennifer's actually doing drive-through service out of, um, the cafe. And so she's right, right here, she's taking orders, and they've driven their cars through the drive-through, right? Um, not that I'm bitter or anything, but Jennifer gets invisible tips, even though she charges prices, and when I'm in the drive-through and gave them free food, I got no tips. I'm just saying. So I'm clearly doing that wrong. And then, um, Lauren and Patrick Mulligan and Jan and John Feeler all also sponsored houses for Safety Town, and those, that made that possible for us, so we wanna make sure we shout out all of them. And that's it.
Council President Sims? I just wanted to go ahead and thank you personally. My son is still talking about this thing. I mean, seriously, the go-karts were probably his highlight, right? But, I mean, it's just interesting hearing him talk about all these things, safety-wise. Honestly, I, I never would've even thought to talk to him about, and so I just appreciate the expertise that was relayed to even six-year-olds, and they're still retaining it a month later. That's great. So, thank you, and more of this, please, 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 please. And thank you for all the sponsors and, and the people that made this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I will, the only thing I have to say is I was a casual observer for, for the graduation ceremony, and I can't imagine how much planning and preparation went into that thing. I mean, it was amazing. All those, all those young, young kids running everywhere, it was just, it just had to have, it took a lot of planning and prep and coordination. I'm just, that was a great, I was so impressed. Really, really nice. It was really nice.
We have a really great team, and we are really lucky, so, yeah. And I, and those teens that you saw with those campers, they each spent, it's twenty-five hours of their time that they spent with those kids, right, and they were incredible. So we got really lucky.
And I was just gonna say, for anyone that had a, a counselor, uh, they got a new appreciation for their parents and their coaches and their teachers. They're like, those kids have a lot of energy, uh, we're wore out, you know, we oughta come back tomorrow, so we're gonna go rest, but it, it gives them-
I can confirm that also.
Yes, it gives them appreciation, for sure, so.
Counselor Sims?
Counselor Or.
I just wanna say thank you, and I love the, the, well, the cars, but the, the summer reading program, I'm sorry, I'm tired, uh, the summer reading program, but just the collaboration with, um, the library and, and the police, but it wasn't just you guys. Like you said, it was a effort, um, with the whole community, and I love to see that, um, generational, you know, collaboration happening in our community. That's really awesome. I was really excited. We had all city departments that come for graduation, right? And that's a big deal. I think that was real cool. Like, everybody helped, and they all came for graduation. I think, um, we had a Public Works guy horrified that we shouted him out, but, you know, it's important to me, for me to give credit where it's due, and like, that was real cool, so.
Uh, I need my glasses. All right, time for general business. Ordinance number one zero six eight, amending Stateon Municipal Code, Chapter two point two zero, and repealing chapters, repealing chapter nine point three six relating to municipal court. So, staff report.
All right, so council and staff, uh, the issue tonight is whether or not to adopt a ordinance to amend the State and Municipal Code, SMC Title two point two zero Municipal Courts, which makes changes to establish the prosecution of specific misdemeanors in the State and Municipal Court, and to delete SMC's Chapter nine point three six. So staff recommends approval of amendments to SMC Chapter two point two zero, as it will amend title, as well as the deletion of nine point three six, to reflect the updated operations of the State and Municipal Court. Uh, and since this is a new project for the city, we would like council to be aware that we realize, uh, there may, may be changes after the court begins to hear and to prosecute misdemeanor cases, and that we get true data as to how, um, it needs to operate. And there are several state criminal charges that we plan to hear in municipal court. I think that you've got the list, um, before you, um, and all others will be continued to be referred to Circuit Court. So the background on this is that based on previous staff reports, in two thousand thirteen, Marion County Commissioners voted to abolish an agreement between Marion County and the city estate and for municipal court services. So the city found the need to amend SMC Title two point two zero in order to re-implement the court in two thousand fourteen. At some point, it was suggested to address misdemeanors as violations in the city. I think we've talked pretty extensively about this, but this proved problematic for many reasons, based upon search and seizure laws and case laws of stop, detain, and arrest. Um, presently, based on an overburdened justice system, we found that Marion County Circuit Court is often unable to prosecute or move forward on cases involving the misdemeanors that we've presented, and we believe handling them in State and Municipal Court will hold defendants accountable and give victims some justice. So we've got some options and motions. Um, one, approve the first consideration of ordinance number one zero six eight, motion to approve ordinance, um, one zero six eight as presented. And the city recorder shall, oh, do I read all this now? No.
No, I think you're good. You just asked, they have questions.
Any questions?
Do we have any public comment on this? Nope.
Oh.
Make sure you state your name and-
Len Hayes, I live here in Stateon.
Thank you.
Okay, this is something I believe we also talked about at the Budget Committee, and something that we wanted to, uh, okay, just wanna reiterate that. Okay. All right, so then I say yes, because we all basically approved the funds for that, that it was supposed to happen, correct?
Yes, correct. So this has been budgeted, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thanks, Len. Is that the only public comment we had? So. Oh, council discussion.
Council Pres- President Sims?
Counselor Julia?
Uh, yeah, I'm just curious, um, just to get clarity, um, why, why is that chapter nine point three six being deleted?
Uh, because as the wording about handling misdemeanors is violations.
Okay, that's right. That's right.
I had the same question, yeah.
I remember that now. So those are now turning back into misdemeanors, and they'll be tried as misdemeanors?
Correct.
Okay. And then, uh, this might be a question for, um, for you, if, do you have, um, how much was budgeted for this? Do you, do you remember how much was budgeted? I can't remember.
I am gonna have to defer to James on that, and it looks like he's coming up. Maybe there's some information.
Uh, James Brand, Finance Director. I don't remember exactly how much was budgeted. Um, we did include in the budget more expenses related to this. Um, there would be corresponding revenues that are kind of unforeseen, so, um, it wasn't a complete package or anything like that, but we did have additional costs that we knew would come because of it.
And is that under the police budget? The police portion of the budget, or were, were that, or the court budget?
Yes, the municipal court has its separate budget, within the general fund.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Council President Sims?
Counsel Patty?
Thank you. Hey, uh, Chief, I just was kinda curious, since we're kinda articulating this out, and we're literally saying that this is due to an overburdened justice system, I'm just wondering, and I'll buzz off if you don't have anything for this, is there any cost-sharing opportunities that we can get to defer some of the increased funds that we're having to spend on this issue? I mean, it seems like if the justice system is overburdened and not able to do what it's intended to do, there should be some sort of subsidia, subsidization that occurs to state and taxpayers, because we're having to increase the expenditure on this item.
Uh, that's not something I would have an answer to. Um, Marion County doesn't, uh, Salem has a municipal court that manages things similarly. Um, I'm not aware of others in Marion County, but I am aware of others in other jurisdictions that do similar with the municipal court, as far as, um, subsidy, I, I'm not aware of how that would work, or if that's an option at all.
Thank you. I just think that maybe we should, if we can, if we have an opportunity to explore, you know, funding some of these increased expenditures, I think that that would be something that would be of interest to me.
Council President Sims?
Counselor Julia?
Um, yeah, just kind of on that, um, it's not actually on that, it's, it just reminded me of another question. Um, so I, I think we did talk about this a little bit. It's just been a few, a li, a little while since we've talked about this, so I think part of this is just refreshing my memory. So we, so it is overburdened currently in Marion County, so is there any option, so when we try it through our municipal court, is the jail space, if we were to convict somebody, is that jail space going to be in Marion County, or is there any opportunity for jail space, or are we looking more at trying to just, um, mostly be trying cases that have some other type of outcome outside of jail time?
Right, so the, we specifically looked at misdemeanors. Um, there's reasons that we left out some, and the reason we chose this was very delicately looked at with the DA, um, with our judge and our prosecuting attorney. Um, but yes, it's ones that have room to have community service, or, um, diversions, or some other options. A lot of them are, we're looking at behavior change, right? Um, and not having repeat things with trespass or, um, low-level thefts and that sort of thing, disorderly conduct. So, uh, the judge has been very successful in other jurisdictions with handling this mis, these misdemeanors, um, reducing the number of times these people have repeat offenses, um, and has found some success in coming up with good consequences for, for the behavior. Um, today I did have some conversations at county level, and, um, we, we do have the options, right, of taking people to jail. Um, our presiding judge for the county decides, um, what's held and what's not, and they have a whole matrix system, so, uh, based on low-level misdemeanors, whether it's prosecuted in our municipal court or a circuit court, um, it's really dictated by the population that they, they have in the jail.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Besides, uh, the fines, are there any community service type of things that the judge can assign also?
Yeah, the ju, the judge has a lot of different options, and, um, community service would definitely be one of those.
Counsel Or.
Okay, so I was looking at this, and, um, so we're taking out chapter nine, but I know that we have like a handful of things, like the, because we're not trying every misdemeanor, correct?
Right.
Where does it say which ones we are, 'cause I know it says-
So, yeah, so we're, that'll be more internal policy, uh, rather than putting it in code, because, uh, basically, uh, code, at least the way I understood it from prosecuting, prosecuting attorney and, uh, and the judge, and I'm, I'm not a court person, I'm a police officer, but, um, is that the ORS has enough written into it to say that it, any of them could be handled in municipal court, but on review, um, and in our discussions, there's some that are far more appropriate to be handled, and some really don't fit that. So it would be internal policy within our department on what we're gonna refer to municipal court, and rather than restrict ourselves by having it in code and maybe having to amend it later, um, we felt that was the cleanest way to handle that. But if you do want me to read through the, which ones, that's fine, we've got, um-
No, I see, uh-
Okay, yeah. No, we just chose intentionally not to put it in code, so that we didn't get ourselves stuck on this is it, or, you know, pigeonholed, and then also, um, that future amendments weren't gonna have to be necessary.
The follow-up? I keep wondering, K, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Counsel Sims. So I, I understand the reasoning and whatnot, but how do we, how do we know or decide when does it change, who changes it? So we have our list here, so, um-
I don't foresee it changing, but we just didn't, it, it didn't seem that it fit to be in code. It's more internal policy reason to have it just dealt with at that level.
Okay. I guess my thought with it is I'm, it has to be, I guess we're making all these changes, and we're spending a lot more money and resources, um, to handle this, so I feel like it has to, you know, if we decide later on, we're only gonna do, we're only gonna, you know, um, see, you know, a handful of these, or, you know, we take some of them off, is it, is it worth the time and the resources? That's just my question. That's just my question for like future, if we kind of change that up. I think it, I, I want to make sure that it's worthwhile and that it's doing what it's supposed to be doing.
Right, and I think that's, um, I mean, I don't think that matters whether those are listed in the code or not for that sort of review. I, I think that would be necessary anyway to make sure it is, um, meeting what we want to meet, right, holding, holding people accountable and having the, the charges prosecuted, but also that it is, uh, fiscally responsible as well.
Is it a case-by-case basis, um, that we're going to decide, or generally speaking?
No, I would say if they're on this list, that's how we're going to handle them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then anything that's, sorry, and anything that's not on this list could potentially be heard?
If it's not on this list, it's going to go to Circuit Court.
Anyway.
Um, yeah, but, so there are, there's always exceptions to every rule. We can't split courts, meaning if, uh, I deal with James and he's got a felony and a misdemeanor, I can't send the felony to Circuit Court and the misdemeanor, uh, to Muni Court.
Yes, I got you.
So if there's bigger one, bigger crimes, um, and the lesser included, then they're going to go up. But we have a fair amount that are on this list that are single, that would be appropriate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel President Sims? Yeah, uh, so just kind of on that line of questioning, um, let's say you have, um, a policy where all the other misdemeanors will be referred to Circuit Court. If you continue, like, to run into that same issue where they're not able to try misdemeanors even at that level, at that point, do we have, like, do you have the discretion in this policy to be able to then try it at a municipal court?
Yeah, yes.
Instead of it just being dismissed at the, the county level?
Oh, I see, like, it's referred and they dismiss. Um, I think it's a possibility, yes. Um, and part of that is why we had to get away from the wording with the violation. Um, but like I say, I mean, we pretty well worked through this with the DA's office, and, and we're very thoughtful on, on why we settled on this list. There's, there's not, um, I, I don't have concern that this is a really solid, good list that's workable and will meet kind of what we're trying to, the, the things that we're trying to accomplish with this. But yes, we have that opportunity to, to visit other staff.
So in your conversation with the DA, it was, there was a certain confidence level that things that weren't on this list would be able to be handled at the Circuit Court level?
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Sims?
Counsel Ort.
Okay, I have one, another question, Chief. Um, what is, where does it go? Fail to carry and present.
So it would be if someone's driving and they don't have their driver's license on them, um, so.
That's what I thought it was.
Yes, that's a crime.
What's offensive littering?
It's littering. So, yeah, it's just fancier. As opposed to the not offensive littering, I don't know.
Counsel President Sims?
Counsel Julia.
Yeah, I just had one more question on that line. Uh, what is failure to appear? Is that?
So if, uh, someone was charged in, um, cited into court and they didn't show for their arraignment, then they can issue a warrant for them to be picked up, so the fail to appear at court.
And is that just for misdemeanors?
So for our court, yes. Uh, so every, every level of, uh, court would have a fail to appear, but ours would just be handling for our municipal court.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, what do we want to do?
Counsel President Sims, I move that we approve the first consideration of ordinance number 1068.
I'll second.
Motion moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Oh, she's, she's got to pull the, all you guys, so.
Hold that thought.
Counsel Patty?
Yes.
Counsel Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Julia?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimous, supported there.
Okay, I do have a, a point of order. Does Counselor Sims get to vote right now?
Yes, he does.
He does?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
So no. No offense.
All right, next, uh, Resolution Number 1115, Municipal Judge Contract Addendum. So, staff report.
James Brand, Finance Director. This resolution goes along with the last one we just discussed, and having to do with increasing the contract for the judge. Um, with the increased caseload and complexity of cases, um, we feel it's appropriate to increase his contract again. So if you recall, we did this not too long ago. Um, it had been a few years since we had done like a cost of living adjustment, so that was done, uh, a few months ago. And this increase is because of the caseload increase and complexity of prosecuting misdemeanors. So the increase we are asking you to approve in his contract is an additional $200 a month. Uh, so this would move it from 2,200 to 2,400 per month. It would be an impact this year of $1,800. Uh, the full year impact, starting next year, would be $2,400. So again, this was included in the budget, so, um, we do ask for your approval for, uh, adjusting the judge's contract. I'll take any questions if you have them.
Counsel President Sims?
Counsel Julia?
So is he, is this, is he currently on like a, like a salary, or is this based on hourly?
It's a monthly amount, doesn't change every month. Um, he typically has court, um, three or four times a month. It's usually every Wednesday.
Is there an anticipation that that, uh, so I see that it's, you know, a $200 increase, which doesn't seem like a lot, based on, like, to me, just like by first glance, doesn't seem like a lot. Um, is it anticipated that it's not going to be that much more time than what he's currently doing?
Um, from his own words, yes. Um, he thought they didn't need to extend the hours really for the court. Um, it, it may, um, extend his time, but not the total time that the court is available for use. So it's usually from, I think they start at one or two in the afternoon on a, on a Wednesday, and then go until about five. So he didn't think the workload would increase this much. Um, the $200 figure came from him. And I, like you, thought it was reasonable, so that's where we are.
All right, thank you.
We have any public comment? No public comment, so council discussion.
I'm.
Counsel Ort.
I'm good with raising it.
All right, council decision.
Counsel President Sims, I move that we approve Resolution Number 1115.
I second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Oh.
Is it a? Yeah.
Aye.
I did miss it the first time.
Just.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. What's going on out there?
Motion's been approved. Quarter four, Finance Report from Mr. Brand.
James Brand, Finance Director. This is the fourth quarter, or kind of an annual finance update for you. Um, I do apologize, it's a little late this month. It's due to, uh, uh, the holiday when, uh, things got shifted, and I was sick one Monday, so I apologize for that. But here we are, looking at the final numbers for the year. Um, so I slightly modified the report again, kind of wanting to show different information, being an annual report. And just wanted to also have a caveat that these are unaudited numbers. We'll, we're going through the audit later this month. Um, so these numbers may change a little bit, but probably not a lot. So it, it looks real similar, um, starting with the full year's actuals from 2023. The next column is the year we just completed, 2024, ending June 2024. Um, compared to, the next column is the full year's budget, and then we've got a percentage of the budget, and finally, a comparison to last year. So it gives you a good comparison to the budget as well as the last year. And some numbers might jump out at you, and that's where, um, I've done a little bit of research and included that in the report. The over, the overarching comment on the budget is that, um, there were budgets for some projects that didn't get done or didn't get started as budgeted. When you're doing a budget, of course, you're looking a few months ahead before the year starts, so, um, there were projects planned to have begun or completed during the year that were shifted off, um, into future years. So a lot, some of the budget wasn't spent, and then, um, some revenue didn't come through as well. So that's where we had, uh, entire grant maybe projected. Well, you, you get grant revenue after you spend the budget, so we had some project grants, um, that aren't completed as well. So a lot, it's, it's just kind of one of those things with budgeting, that the same project gets budgeted maybe year after year. So it kind of inflates budgets over time, but that's just kind of the beast you live with, because you want to be able to spend the money if you can. Um, so you project a, you budget for it. If you can do the project, you do it. If you don't, then oftentimes you have to kick it forward another year. So that's kind of, explains a lot of these numbers. Um, I did want to highlight some things, though. I'll just walk through some, some, you know, glaring differences. In that very first row, we're looking at the revenues, the charges for services, you notice a big drop compared to last year. Um, of course, most of you know that our fees did increase over the year. Um, we do have a few more customers, so it, it stands to, uh, have a question. And most of that is because the income was high in 2023 due to SDCs. So with the development of the new apartment complexes, a lot more income was received for those charges. And I think I've got that written down as, um, I want, it was 2.2 million that was collected in 2023 for SDCs. So that's why there was a drop this year, but it was only a little over 1 million. So the revenue, the normal streams of revenue for utilities, um, did have a healthy increase. Also.
Um, James, so on that, on that same line, though, so we budgeted, um, the 7 million, and we, you know, 156, and then the actuals were 7,162, so we, so even though it wasn't as much as last year, it still was on par and higher, right?
It was, that's, that's, we call that budget dust. That's, that's right on.
Okay.
Yeah, that's very, very close to where we budgeted, so yes. It's what we expected for the year. We didn't anticipate a lot of SDCs this year. Um, however, we did project to spend a lot of those SDCs on some of those projects that were delayed, so, that kind of accounts for the, the transfers. Um, the SDCs are handled by transfers, where we transfer money from the SDC funds to the utility funds where the projects are spent. So that's why the, the transfers were, um, well under the budgeted amount. Uh, the intergovernmental was undercollected, and that's mainly due to, um, the HUD grant, which was projected. Uh, that's 465,000 for downtown improvements, and that may have been just a, budget oversight. It is, I don't, that project wasn't able to be completed all last year, and it won't be all completed by the end of this year as well. Um, it's a, I think it's a three-year grant, and most of the design work is being done now before the construction is done, and then, um, will be reimbursed for those construction costs in this year and next year combined. So th- this is a grant, it's a project that will get done within the grant a lot of time, but it just, it's going to take the full three years, so. It, the full thing was budgeted all of last year, which probably shouldn't have been done, but that's the way the budget was set. Interest earnings, as I've shared before, are higher than budgeted, um, due to the high interest rates available to us, so we're taking advantage of that. Um, you probably know why the court, um, fines are lower, so that's under fines and forfeitures, that line. Um, just 36% collected compared to the budget, and that's because of the remission, um, from our governor. $62,000 was refunded or not collected. So I'll shift now down to the expenditure side. If there's any more questions about revenue, I could stop right there. Okay, I'll move to the expenditures. The general fund operations, uh, spent about 500,000 more than prior years, and that was, um, basically the transfer to the street fund that we did last year of 500,000. So that money is in the street fund now. The street fund also spent more than it did last year, and that's mostly due to the street sweeper that we purchased of just over $400,000. Uh, the, that, that street fund was still well under budget, and that's due to delays to, uh, the street improvements as we plan, um, the next phase of streets to improve. The water fund was also underspent, and that's because the Aquifer Storage Recovery Project, 1.25 million dollar project, um, it was just delayed or not done in that year. It still was under design, and it is planned to be done this current fiscal year, FY '25. The stormwater fund was underspent because of another, uh, planned project that was pushed off to this year, and that's the Stormwater Master Plan. About $350,000 is projected for that. And as I've said, that the SDCs, um, were underspent due to mainly the delay of those SDC-funded capital projects. So we do have projections to spend a lot of those SDCs, and some of those projects are underway right now, um, with Ida Street, um, both sewer and water projects. Um, so we will be spending some of those funds. I think the SDCs, um, compared to historic, um, have pretty high cash balances right now, and I did provide the, cash by fund for you, um, later in the report. And, um, there's quite a bit there in the SDC funds, and that's kind of just awaiting those projects that we have on deck. So we do have plans to spend those. So overall, um, compared to the budget, the city collected 95% of the budgeted revenue and spent 77% of the budget. And like I said, most of those shortfalls are just due to delay of grant projects and just other projects that have been pushed off. Most of those projects are planned again and budgeted again this year, FY '25. And then overall, in comparison to last year, um, a lot of the differences in the, in the change are due to the SDCs, uh, being highly collected in fiscal year '23, and then highly projected to be spent in fiscal year '24. So I will, uh, wrap up and then take questions. I did want to introduce another of the staff in the fiscal department. I've, um, shared with you two of the four staff, and, um, today I wanted to talk a little bit about Michelle Spangler. She handles, handles all of our accounts payable. She does it very well. Um, I think I gave. I think I gave you three words for her and, or phrases. The first is CA transplant. That's California, yes, she's from California. I will apologize for that. She was hired before I got there, but we do accept her. There's another laugh in it. It's the things, Dayton has grown to accept those folk. But Michelle is a hard worker, and we do honestly appreciate her service. But she is from California. Secondly, Michelle has motherly instincts, okay? These are all positive qualities. I think highly of my mother, so this is a very positive thing here. She sees to it that the department is run smoothly. She sees to it that people get along. She is not afraid to speak up when something needs to be said. She desires success for all the city departments, and she works hard to achieve these things. She's a great asset to the city, and I'm glad she's in our department. If, if we could, you know, I just look for, too bad we're a small city, because she would deserve to be, you know, have a chance to advance and have a, you know, more of an authoritative role and just take on more. But we are what we are, and we don't have a lot of opportunity for growth, so I hope she sticks around. The last one there is GSD, and I'm not going to take suggestions on what that might stand for. It's Get Stuff Done, and Michelle gets stuff done. This is her motto, and she lives it out. She's very focused. When she's at work, she's working. And I really appreciate her work ethic, and I, I give her projects and they get done. She, the, the one part that frustrates me is that she's accounts payable, so she pays bills early, a little earlier than I would like to sometimes for cash reasons, but she's going to get it done, and she's going to get it done early, and I can count on her to do that. So I am still willing to take questions on the finance report if you have any.
Any public comments? All right, council discussion then.
Yeah, thank you. I don't know, I, I know you're giving me good reasons, but I don't know if this is helping the whole, the whole argument for long term, like our budget's going to fall off a cliff type of a conversation we had. This is great, this looks awesome. I I was curious about the interest, the interests here. I know you asked about the revenues, and then I didn't speak up then, but I'm going to go back to them. That is, I mean, that's a really big number, so where, so where does that come from? So you were saying that that comes from because of the high interest rates that are currently available. What, what monies are earning that currently?
So all of our cash, you do have a cash report. There's about $20 million in cash citywide. That's all of the funds all combined. All of that money is in two accounts. One is the LGIP. It's a state local government investment pool where many municipalities have their cash, and that's where we've had the bulk of our cash, 99% of it for a long time. It earns, it's about at, I think, five and a quarter right now. I've moved most of that money out of that account and into an Umpqua money market account, which earns the LGIP account plus a quarter percent. So that's a locked in rate. We were, I think we were the last municipality to get that account. They don't offer it anymore. So I've moved our money, predominantly all of it into that account. So it's, it, I think right now it's earning about 5.4, 5.45%.
The monies that get earned from that, are those still tied to the funds that they are earned from?
Yes, that's exactly right. When we earn interest, we earn one lump sum amount, but it's divided into the funds proportionally compared, comparative to their balances.
Okay.
Sorry, didn't have my mic on. I had a, I had a question on the total revenue minus expenditures, the very bottom line. So where is the, the, the last number, 3,692,294? Where is that coming from?
So that's the total revenue budgeted minus the total expenses budgeted. And yes, that is a big negative number, and that's because we were projected to spend a lot of that SDC money. So if you look at the budgeted amounts for, in the first column, we received a lot more than we spent that year. That was an actual number. So in FY '23, and this is mostly the SDCs, we received a lot more than we spent. And so now we're on that opposite end of the trend, where we're not anticipating to receive a lot of those SDC funds, but we were projected to spend it. We didn't actually spend that much, as you can see, the total expenditures for the year were only the 16.7 million, but budgetarily, we were projected to use a lot of those one-time funds.
Okay. Oh, there we are. Okay, all right. Thanks.
Council President?
Council Julia?
Yeah, and then a question on the expenditures, and I, I know this is probably the one that, this is the area that sometimes I, I feel like I have more confusion on is the $500,000 that was not spent under general operations. Do you kind of know where that is mostly coming from?
You're looking at the revenue for general operations?
I'm looking at the expenditures for general operations.
Oh, I see.
Because I'm noticing it's a lot more than it was last year, but still not nearly the budgeted amount.
No, that is where we budget for that HUD grant, 465,000.
That's right.
So it was all budgeted, but I think 17,000 was all that we spent in the year.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thanks, James.
You're welcome.
Communications from city staff.
I don't have anything to send you. It doesn't look like anybody else in the audience does either, so we're good.
Wow. Anybody else have anything? No. Think we're all. Meeting adjourned. Ah, thanks. I made it through. I was just.